Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year to everyone. This is our first meeting of the 2025 year. At this time, everybody please rise and Dr. Johnson will introduce an occasion for our central leaders.
Let's pray, dear Father, we thank you for this awesome opportunity that you have given us to live and to move and to have our being. We thank you for a plan in the year that you have allowed each and every one of us to see. Thank you for this county, we thank you for our leaders. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct our hearts and our minds, and we can continue to work on behalf of the least of these, our brethren, in improving our work in County for the future. Bless those who are here, bless those who want to be here but could not be here. We ask you to continue to lift us up in a time like this that we may be able to be strong enough to be able to sustain the progress that we are looking for in 2025 and beyond. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pray to Jesus, through the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. Can you see it? At this time, we would like for the Honorable Roger Queen to come forward along with the new council members, Mr. Lafayette Jackson, to be sworn in. And following behind, Mr. Jackson, who would have sworn in of all other officers at this time. What is up?
Good evening, good evening. Do you have any questions, gentlemen, as they stand here? Doctor Johnson. Please raise your hand. Come on, man. Behind me. You say, you say. All right. Please, raise your left hand. Robert, raise your right hand. Hi.
Hi.
Say your name.
Lafayette Jackson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties thereof.
The duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please join me in welcoming Lafayette Jackson to the council. Johnson, Jackson, if you'd like to say a few words, you come to the mic over here. You come to the podium, right over here. And then have your seat where you.
First of all, I'd like to thank each and every dear heart for coming out and supporting this wonderful occasion. Thank, thank each and every person that voted for me and thought enough for me that I could do a great job. Thank God for my beautiful wife that supported me and my campaign team. Thank God for my Dinkin' Ridges, he would ride around his pickup truck and would put down some signs. And don't let this be the last time that you come to a council meeting. We ask you to continue to come and support and make your voices heard. Thank you.
At this time, with Dr. Johnson, Mr. Missley, and the other officer, you just want in.
The families can come up, families, ladies, come up. All share up in front, put your, well, put your man home and your neighbor, your left hand on it, everybody kind of touch it a little bit, touch in the bridge. All right, raise your right hand, please. I'll say, all right, please state your name. Hi.
Daniel Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties thereof.
The duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome, thank you.
The council had to thank the Honorable Judge Roger Queen for coming in and presiding as a sworn officer.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to, on behalf of the county, give a special thanks to Judge McQueen. He served as the judge for a whole lot of his foregives, and he didn't have to do that, but he did, and we do appreciate his service to Marlboro County. Thank you.
Okay, going by the agenda, we had the three additional officers. Beginning, we have an nomination for the chair. Oh, I just, I just need, just need. Approval of agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All the favors show hands. Unanimous. Now we go to the additional officers. Do we have any, for the chair, any nomination?
Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that since only been one year of this president leadership, we leave the leadership as it is this year to the second. And normal procedure, as we normally leave it in position two years, I make a motion that we leave the leadership as it is, the second.
Any discussion? And all the favor, Abby Wood, we demand a chair, and sorry, Missley, at back chair, show hands. It is unanimous. Approval of minutes, December 10th, 2024. Any corrections or amendments?
I think we approved the amendments written. Second.
What have been made, is that in discussion? And all the favors show hands. Unanimous. Presentation, do we have any seconded or demarcation members here at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I thought of the Senator's foreman, who was on his way to Columbia today, who was our first day back in session, and having Mr. Love and Mr. Hayes regret that they cannot be here tonight, but that they will try and make every meeting they can when they're not in session.
Sounds very good, I'm seeing them. But thank everybody that was, could have been here. Then we have Martin Wood for that audit, 21, 22, 24. Wood.
Thank you, Chairman. I believe everybody should have received a letter tonight. It's got an executive summary in it on page, should be the third page in that document, and that's what we'll go through. So having to look through a bunch of pages in the audit report. So for your 6/30/24 audit, you received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion we can give on the set of financial statements. So congratulations to that. Number one is pretty self-explanatory, just kind of gives you an outline of the audit report. I wouldn't spend a whole lot of time on that, but just kind of gives you the different sections between the financial statements, the notes, the supplemental schedules. That's, that's more detail of the financial statements upfront, so if you wanted to see how a particular revenue item in the general fund did compared to budget, or a particular department did compared to budget, that'll be where that information will be at. And then your compliance section is the very last section. There's two letters in the compliance section. One is an internal control letter. Basically, you do not have any findings, so there were no findings in this audit, once again. And the second letter is a compliance letter over a single audit, on how you spent federal awards, and there were no issues or no compliance findings in relation to that as well. So number two, we're going to run through the general fund first, and then come back to the proprietary funds. Number two, you could find this on page 15 of your audit report, if you want to go back and see the details. Total assets were 10.3 million. liabilities were a little over 3 million, so your fund balance as of 6/30/24 was $7.2 million. You can kind of see how that's broken down between non-spendable, that's prepaid expenses, assigned is 500,000, so your unassigned fund balance is almost $6.7 million. Total revenues, this is going to be on page 17, if you want to look at your audit report and see how the revenues broke down. It's 14.8. Operating expenditures are 16.2. Transfers and other financing sources were a little over a million dollars, so you had a negative change in fund balance at 6/30/24 of about $367,000. For proprietary funds, this will be on page 19, so you could see the different funds, how they did. I've got them all combined into one. Nine point, almost 9.7 million. Total liabilities of 3.6, so your net position or equity is a little over $6 million. A little, a little over 1.1 is capital assets, and the other 4 point, almost 9 million, is unrestricted. The revenues, this will be on page 20, once again, you can look at that, and you can see the different proprietary funds and how they did, but like I said, I've combined them. Total revenues are 5.8 million. Operating expenditures are 6.1. Your transfers were about 50,000, so you had a negative change in your equity of about overall $340,000. If you want to look at the budget on number three, this is found on page 67 of your audit report. Page 60 through 66 would be the details, if you wanted to see the exact revenue sources and the budgets by departments. That's where that information will be at, so you, like I said, you can kind of see how one particular revenue did, or one particular department did. Which the revenues exceeded budget by almost 700,000. Expenditures were over budget by a little over 1.1, and your transfers coming into the general fund were over about 50,000. You know, it was a good audit, like I said, no findings, unmodified report, so that's always a good thing. I just want to thank Wes and his staff. You know, we've come in here for about two weeks, and we kind of are pretty disrupted to their everyday duties that they have to do, because we're asking for a lot of information and asking for a lot of things to be pulled, and asking a bunch of questions when we're here, and we have a limited time, that we've got to get in and get out. As y'all know, these audit reports for counties are due January the 1st. And if they're not done, you can get an extension, but if you get too many extensions, they're going to start cutting your funding off, so, and we have about six of these that we do. So time is of essence when we get in, and so we come in and we hit it pretty hard, and we, I just, you know, want to thank Wes and his staff, they do a really good job, and makes our life a lot easier. Your administrator was very helpful, too, so with that, I'll answer any questions, if anybody's got anything.
So can you explain now the summary report, number nine? What does that mean, it says that you qualified as a local attorney?
All right, so what that means is, because you spent more than $750,000 from federal awards, you had, you had to do, you had to have a single audit done. What that means is, it's a compliance audit, and so we have to look at your federal awards that you spent, and we have to do compliance work on that. A low risk audit T means you have had single audits done in the past and no findings. All that means is, it's a testing criteria for us as auditors on how much programs we have to test. It's not an indication of you're doing good or you're doing bad. It's a, it's an issue that we as auditors have to do, because it tells us how many expenditures or major programs we have to look at. It's a coverage issue, so that's what that's talking about.
Thank you.
Mr. Woods, have you ever had a, an audit that was unfavorable for a county?
Sure, I have.
Okay, what, what does that procedure look like?
It, it can all, it can all vary. I mean, I've had it where revenues were under budget, expenditure was over budget, and they paid into their fund balance, and they've got a month of fund balance in reserves. I've had audits that have not had unmodified opinions, we've had unmodified opinions, so those would be things that would be, you know, look unfavorable upon. But sure, even though you had a negative in the, in the fund balance for the year, you're at $6.7 million. Y'all've got, 16 million, y'all probably got four to five months in reserves, and so the rule of thumb is you want three to six months. And so y'all are well within that, in that range. And so, you know, like I said, an unfavorable audit would be, you've got a month or less in reserves, you've got dwindling, you know, revenues, you've got a lot of findings, you've got potential qualified opinion, but those would be viewed as unfavorable.
So from a financial analysis standpoint, Marlboro County has a healthy.
Has a very healthy fund balance, yes.
Anyone else? Mr. Wood, we thank you for, for your team. If we have any more questions, can we reach out and call your officer?
Sure, Wes has got my contact, so he knows, he just weighs probably just seventy emails, he's got the email down back, so if y'all got any questions, I'll be happy to answer it, as much as best my ability. Okay? All right, thank you.
Revenue decision, we pray before council, we had no one to sign up, correct? Okay, moving on. Executive session, we go to executive session to discuss a contractual matter. Make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move into executive session for contractual matters.
Second.
Motion and second. All the favors show hands. Thank you. We'll turn for executive session.
Thank you very much for your work. How does the latest research on the best fit on a practice?
We had a lot of, um, we had a lot of trouble in this process, um, of the community that's here. I'm not able to give you the exact answer, but in the community, it's all been a bit difficult. on the page.
Your comments are always a really big achievement. Um, I've been in Portland, it's hard.
For you to make yourself out of that, for a month and eight months. And it's just, and I was there with him, I think, at the house, you know, and so we were talking about one eight, there's no difference between going through this. Order number four four two five, those ones, the resolution expressly states from all the counties, how fair and honest the year is, that unfortunately the credit campus down on cash flow, but they spent a lot of money in favor of reparations, reparation, and improvement to grant the town facilities, and a service of equipment, including to run the station continuously, and related support, but the county will therefore see the proceeds of the obligations, doesn't have a way to give.
Good evening, gentlemen, councilmembers, you have for you, uh, a reimbursement resolution that, uh, I included a memo with the resolution. Uh, it's designed to provide for a means to, uh, receive reimbursement from a future bond issue, uh, pushing the number of interplecatory process, uh, you got approved, uh, issuance of the thousand dollar application bond as part of the budget. And, uh, this is a, this reimbursement resolution is a way that, uh, if we, if the county can curse cost prior to issuing the bond, uh, they're able to receive reimbursement from the bond which, uh, eliminates the budgetary issue.
There's a question, would this really be something that we already have allocated for the budget?
No, no, it's, it's a part of it, it's part of the thing that happened.
Mr. Chair, what are your thoughts on the, uh, reservation zero one, two five zero?
All of the ladies and gentlemen, questions and discussions, all of our thankless, all of you, it is now done. Order number eight four nine, the order to the grand after inspection, instead of the non-seeing, by the county, just all thinking about the mall account, I think, uh, we start to work every week, because these are the things that are being extended to the grand after payment, I would say, along the other side of the land, yes, with the property in the capital.
Okay, as you have it, uh, have it in the, in the packet, you have the ordinance which was, uh, drafted by the county's bond council, in force, single void, uh, the issuance of bond, uh, is a part of the budgetary process, and the existing five point three mill of this service, uh, will perform an order sheet, she claims that, that, that will be handled in the next week, and as I mentioned here, the facility is designed to, uh, provide the facility improvements, acquire equipment, uh, and better, better costs, that you can improve, that's also part of the budgetary process, that's pretty good.
Uh, yes, sir. Pretty good. Mr. Chair, what are your thoughts on this? Okay, four. All of the ladies and gentlemen, and the gentlemen, to the head of the office, thank you. We have, order number eight five zero, now what is going around the execution and the bill of feeing of the available tax agreement, by any of your kind of soccer mom and company know, to the guy at Compton Wireless, include gambling related or two year interest, in other form of the relation, provide for a payment for feeing of the tax, the other nine to eight fifty, how long for a year?
This is the first reading, um, of one of my projects, um, this, project wire, his way of presenting, I just want to add two projects that we are bringing for, on, again, here.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. All of the ladies and gentlemen, and the gentlemen, in, uh, our thankful, how long it, please, that, a resolution oh one, two five oh two, a resolution authorized a settlement of a grant, awarded a amount of one billion five hundred thousand, a factored real estate plus a, a mortgage, among other accounts, over as of April, uh, for our I M grants, uh, for one and two improvements, the new thing has been one and waste nine improvements property.
So this is right, uh, on my, uh, we're, uh, we're doing, portion of the former Congress, and before I went further, I want to thank Chris, he's here for his work with, with that, and more, uh, and was producing the free work work on the grants as well, uh, as you can see, you know, as I told you before, my first guy, we're going to be working on grants, getting paid, doing, uh, now this grant in particular is, uh, as it says, for, for Esalen, for company Esalen, for two improvements. Those improvements aren't just going to affect the industry, they're going to affect the corridor on which those, in, in all the different residential in that area, so it's a huge undertaking, and it's something that we needed to start approving, countywide, we're just forgetting, uh, of getting that, getting that super stuff really done, over accounting.
I'll leave for your first, a resolution, I don't want to be talking about this.
All of the ladies and gentlemen, and the question, discussion, can I ask all the thankless? The, uh, resolution oh one, two five, oh three, the resolution authorized a settlement of a factored line of one hundred common grant, to the state coordinate account for eight hundred seventy grand, and a hundred fifty thousand dollars, over half of A H D P.
Our, this grant is another, another grant, we're not developing, our Department of Commerce, uh, in this case, uh, a grant that helps our existing industry, helps their expansion, and we need these efforts from the county.
Mr. Chair, what are your thoughts on this, uh, this, uh, resolution, I just think?
Thank you. And the gentleman, all of the, the land is, from, five, one of nine, the company, uh, the, uh, resolution oh one, two five, oh four, a resolution authorized a settlement of a factored line of one hundred common grant, to the state coordinate account, but even on the government grant, in a hundred seventy million dollars, over half of Exelon Houston, then with the other.
Uh, this is not the one we have, uh, with the floor, or portion of, of these two, uh, and again, this, this thanks to, definitely, uh, maybe so we get those, I do want to thank you, and we talked about, we got, you, this, helping, with, with, etc., authority, maybe so this guy can, uh, with us, so we appreciate all this effort.
Quick question, if we were recording, thank you, in the, in the, so, city sewers more, right, so, it's going to be city sewer that reaches out towards, um, the mountain, and, you know, that's a corridor that we've been really wanting to get, nine south, we haven't had nine north yet, but the city themselves, I, you know, nine north, you know, so, we're really working on getting a lot of sewer. Can they come in, blow up?
They will flow through us, and it goes to the city of business, and they already have the, pretty facilities, and they've done the engineering on that already.
That's why I think, man.
You know, something, you want, but we're looking at the city to help us with that, and that's something that, you know, um, we won't spend until we can, you know, get the rest of the match on that, but so that, the, the magic part is just we have the engineering on that, where the state pays for everything else, and that includes the, the seven million, the one point five million, and the two million, all that only has a match for the one point five million, the really seven hundred million, but we only have the match for the one point five million.
Mr. Chair, what are your thoughts on the two million? All of the ladies and gentlemen, and the gentlemen, can I ask all the thankless? Resolution oh one, two five, oh five, a resolution authorized a settlement of a factored line of one hundred common grant, to the state coordinate account, but even on the government grant, in a lot of two billion dollars, over half of Exelon D C, number oh, thirty six.
So this grant is for West Worth, uh, facility, that, not the one, that's for the mountain, that's, you know, number oh, that's, uh, for the site, uh, the, the mall site, you know, this, that's part of the Exelon deal at the mall site, so, that's for that, and that helps with, um, the West Worth facility there, which will turn out any type of, so that, but it's just coming, we have to come in, we, we definitely need that, and that facility in the, for them, for them, and for any other municipal facilities, possibly in the future, so, we definitely need that, um, because it will help any others, if we have any other problem down there, if we were expanding any type of, uh, in the industry, we definitely need that facility, all right, so we not going to help it down for work.
Mr. Chair, how long, how long, any question?
I want to ask this question, um, the, 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 that we have, when we see this at the, uh, with the folks here, people who are getting, or, here, you would say this way, but, how are these people prepared?
Are you talking about the one two, C C?
Okay, so Lycan, he's the commissioner, uh, he's, he's over the, uh, Department of Commerce, he's the secretary, um, and then you have those others that are, that is part of, of that, now, um, they, and I'm going, and we talked about it before, I'm going to send that back to them, to update the name on here, because it does have, that's something, it's pretty subjective, I need to send that back, but if you get the key graphic, I'll do accept that, those brands, and, I'm going to have to whom, and it needs me, so, as we talked about before, last week, we're going to have, and, you know, we don't lie here to do that, if you already talked about it, we go here, they're going to send another letter on that.
So that is sent to you now, but, and that is sent to you?
Yes, it is.
But it's from, uh, 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 uh.
That is, that is, other than named about a C C name, that's all, it, it was more, that's a clairvoyant, but people with that clairvoyant, I still want that C C to put my name on there, so, we have on my contact, this is, this is, yes, that's correct.
How many, what are your notes? Mr. Chair, now, if you want to do this, do the, do the, do the, do the, do the, uh, uh, I don't, I don't know, but you have one, and, uh, uh, probably, for free.
Mr. Chair, now, the most obvious step, resolution, ordinance, uh, eight thousand.
And please, and, uh, right, it isn't that, if we have that authority, who are their commission, anytime?
I may ask a question about, uh, what, is your idea that, uh, and, uh, to be more important, because it keeps, uh, I mean, saying this to me now, the bar was plastic, it's going to be in all, uh, make a patient, and I'm just going to follow up the, I'm not sure, but if you're, I, I submitted the names of the, you want, that's, twenty twenty three.
Uh, I, I think, Councilwoman Woods, if not, as a part of the request, we need to be, and establish, or, or commissioners, go to one, okay, we, we'll establish a meeting in, contact, on those, on a, 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 on[1643.10] We do have, we still have some issues with some of the expenditures that were not loaded. Take the way in, which are in particular, and that's in our departmental, if we look on the uh uh the expenditure that the area of work, we've had the uh the greatest amount of expenditures for a percentage. But check it out. We're gonna check it out, I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be close.
But we're very close enough, we don't think it's that much of an hour.
Uh, I think the the issue is gonna be with our a revenue we do anticipate we're gonna have higher revenue. Maybe you've been. We are, we're more than good position and of course, I think we've got some, you know, hopefully some exciting uh new revenue. No questions, I'll um move up uh over to the uh, I've got a project report uh and those expenditures are included through December thirty one of twenty twenty four. And that's where all our capital project funds. Uh, the report includes the allocation budget, that includes September tenth meeting, that portion of the number then. Uh, the allocation uh allows for capital budget of two million four hundred twenty five thousand for the county's aquatic center. Uh, the report provides a listing of all payments paid on all projects included, and I'll continue to update this. I don't know if there's any questions about it. For that, we're gonna talk about this.
Again, thank you for putting this under the forty years.
Certainly.
I didn't provide support. And here, December thirty first of that.
That we met the requirement, let me go to that report, but I think that's uh that is a very important report, and that's on page sixty six. Uh, I've included uh the report that was submitted on the state local fiscal recovery funds, uh for the American Rescue Plan expenditures through March thirty one, twenty twenty four. As indicated, county had expended two million nine hundred seventy five thousand two hundred forty seven dollars through March thirty one. Also attached is the activity of the receipt of the ARPA funds through December thirty one, twenty twenty four. From April uh one uh through December thirty one, the county has expended and committed two million one hundred seventeen thousand uh six hundred eighty nine dollars and twenty seven cents in qualified activities for a total of five million ninety two thousand nine hundred forty six dollars and thirty seven cents. The county's allocation for ARPA was five million seventy three thousand one hundred fifteen dollars, actually, it's actually exceeded uh the the amount that we receive in terms of the allocation. Of course, we do receive some interest income, I don't know what can cover that. Uh, the only portion that is committed but unexpended is remaining contract with CPL, which is the architectural engineering, a contract off to the aquatic center, that is a qualify uh used to be able to expand later. Uh, the county's final report will be submitted uh April thirtieth of twenty twenty five, satisfying commitment and expenditure of ARPA funds through December twenty twenty four. I've got, of course, I've got the the cash balance report, that was just prior, that's on page sixty two. Uh, I'm I'm just gonna do that for your information. One last report that I have that I thought might might be interested in. I've included a uh report on mileage rates for smaller counties in it. You may have seen this document coming through uh coming to your box. Uh, the information was pulled from the South Carolina Association of Counties publication, South Carolina Property Tax Rates by County. The comparisons included only counties that had a mill value of less than four hundred thousand dollars. Of the twelve counties, Marlborough's the second lowest rate. Marlborough County mileage is ninety eight operating and thirty point three miles other for a total of one twenty eight point three miles. The lowest of the twelve comparison counties in the valley bill. Uh, their operating mileage was ninety seven point eight and their other miles were twenty nine point nine for a total of one twenty seven point six nine four, with them about a half a mile of lowest. Uh, the average within this group, looking at the twelve counties, under uh a hundred thousand dollar mill value or rest was a hundred forty eight point two six mill operating, thirty four point one two uh miles other for a total of one eighty two point four eight. See on the next page, see the listing of all those those different counties that are included in comparison. Some there are various, there's some very significant uh deviation in the in the uh the actual rates. I mean, I look at, like, for Allendale, their their operating mileage is two hundred sixteen point seven seven, we're at ninety. You can see Amber is is uh pretty tight as well, too. Their federal is like one hundred five hundred. I I think we're, I think we're very competitive with our with our tax rate in terms of county. Uh, I think this is a this is a good comparison, looking at those smaller counties, um, you know, comparing multiples of rates.
So with everything, with all the smaller counties that we have, such as Allendale, um, Marlborough, you know, smaller counties, Amber, we are really happy. We're we're right here, we're very low. Allendale has a little rate that is almost double ours. So we we've done a good job of keeping tax burden away from our citizens. And so um just be proud, we're very low there now. There has to be adjustments in the future, but for right now, we keep that tax burden off of our citizens and and compared to smaller counties, we're very low.
Thanks for that.
Exactly. Right where we are, not going that underburning. I respect to being a quality.